This is Peter Casper, I call the Town of Hebron's Board of Selectmen's regular meeting for February 15th to order at 7:00 PM. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Section three on the agenda, is additions or changes to the agenda, I think we have one recommendation, I'll have Andy articulate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation to the board would be due to having staff and volunteers with us tonight on some items, that we move items nine A, B, and C on the agenda to right in front or right after number eight, Old Business. We'll conduct those three prior to the Old Business if the board wishes to agree.
Does anyone disagree with that recommendation? The board, okay, great, we'll make that change, thank you, Andy. Okay, that moves us to section four on the agenda, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board of selectmen. Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office or through myself as the board chair. Persons wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box, in the chat box, and you'll be recognized. So Donna, do we have folks for public comment?
There is nothing at this time.
Okay, and as a reminder, if you're new, there is also an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well for public comment. I turn it over to Andy for good to know and special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so tonight, under special recognition or good to know, we have the Town Center Project with us, I believe Holly's on here, along with maybe some of her other counterparts. I know Donna's been assisting with that, and they would like to give the selectmen an update on upcoming events.
No audio, Heather.
Yeah, I think Holly's having some audio issues. No, it says you're not muted, but it's not picking up your microphone, Holly.
Holly, try checking in the, try checking in the settings, that little wheel and the upper right-hand side. If you check the audio in the settings, you might be able to select the correct microphone. Or you can try calling in.
Donna, do you happen to have her phone number, you could call her, maybe she could do it that way?
The choice of technology.
I think she's dialing in right now.
Yes, she is.
Hi, everyone.
There we go.
Hi there.
I'm so sorry for the technical difficulties. I even have my IT person on site and he couldn't figure it out for me either. Thank you very much, Board of Selectmen, Andy, Donna, for getting us on the agenda tonight. I know that budget season's here, however, the Town Center Project just wanted to bring you guys into the loop on our year that we have planned. So if you guys have a few minutes, I know most of you are familiar with us, but we wouldn't like to just let you know that our mission, you know, the mission is, is to reinvent and restore the center of our town, of our historic town. We accomplish this by revitalizing art installations, special events that are just growing leaps and bounds, and other activities that engage the community and attract visitors to us. So through our presentation, we have some photographs of past events that we've held in town. There's the very rainy Harvest Moon Festival, but it's still a ton of townspeople, a ton of, a ton of community support, and some other, you know, things that we've done, the townwide tag sale, it's always well received. There's, our next slide tells us about what we are, what we're going to be doing this coming, this coming year. Our goal is to create more community, to continue to promote our downtown area. We'd love to incorporate more of our Main Street. We're working very hard on getting all the way down to Ted's. And then, of course, continuing to beautify where our Main Street, because that is Hebron. So then if we move right along to our 2024 event, which is really the reason for our conversation here tonight, and just wanted to let you guys know that we have a whole list of events, a whole year's worth coming up. The first of which is going to be Maple by Moonlight on March 15th. It is a gala fundraiser for the Town Center Project. It's the kickoff to Maple Festival. Then we have our, we're going to roll right into Maple Festival on the next day, which will be March 16th and 17th. Maple Festival this year has got a huge following. We've been meeting every Saturday and we have anywhere between, I'd say 10 and 15 to 20 volunteers on a weekly basis. It's been wonderful to see the community support for this event. So we're really looking forward to Maple Festival this year. The Spring Course, the Hebron Community Course, has their spring concert all scheduled, and that's going to be on April 14th. The townwide tag sale this year is going to be May 4th, so you guys get ready, clean out your garages, participate in that, that event with us. Marketing and our art show, we have scheduled for May 11th, which is the Saturday before Mother's Day, which should promote wonderful downtown activity for moms and things like that. Make Music Day this year is going to be on a Friday. Drew Gibson, who is our chairperson, who is really our music man, has an incredible lineup. He's got an incredible lineup for Harvest Moon, I mean, for Hebron Maple Festival as well. So join us on June 21st for Make Music Day. The Fourth of July celebration is always a very lovely homegrown, smaller celebration that takes place on the center of our Old Town Hall steps, which I think Dan Larson has participated in every year, we thank you for that. But he can attest that it's very homegrown and, and very heartfelt. The Summer Concert Series is again going to be on Friday night. We start on June 28th, and then we're going to go all the way through August 9th. Again, a great lineup, a lot of diversification. There's a Yiddish band this year. I know that the reggae band from last year, we're trying to secure them again, because they were a huge hit. And then we wrap up our year with Harvest Moon Festival. And after last year, we do have a rain date, so Harvest Moon Festival is going to be the 26th of October. And our rain date's going to be the 27th. We're really looking forward to producing a number of events for our town. This particular slide here, I think, is super special, because it shows how much we've grown. So the picture that has the family with the snow folk, that's Ruth and her husband who live in town. She painted Nittles, and then the next year, they have a child and they're taking their picture with Nittles. So it's, it's pretty special how integrated, yeah, integrated the Town Center Project has become in our community. And, and of course, there's our storage facility, which we can't thank the Board of Selectmen for all of your support and help with that. I think that that pretty much, well, I know I don't want to take up a lot of your guys' time tonight. We can talk a little bit about where we're going. We'd like to expand our current art installations. We'd love for our chairs to make it all the way down Main Street, maybe up Johnny Horton Boulevard. We're working on a maintenance program so that we can keep them flowing through, so that we can keep the ones that need to be repaired out of the rotation and put in new ones, just so that it's always fresh and beautiful. Adding Maple Festival onto our roster of events certainly has broadened our events to incorporate more of Main Street. Yeah, and, and we just, you know, this year, we really wanted to bring Maple Festival home. So I feel like we've really accomplished, and, and we've grown in a fashion that we were hoping to. My, my Board of Directors is very excited for 2024. We've added two new people, so we're up to nine strong. And, and it's just, you know, we just want to let you guys know, mark calendars. These are the things that are happening through the Town Center Project this year, and thank you always for your support. And thank you very much for your time tonight.
I just have one thing before, and obviously the rest of the board can comment on this questions as well. I just, I just wanted to highlight this as an example of what a, a big difference such a small group of people can, can make in our community. And I, I think this is so apropos for good to know and special recognition in the sense that the more the people of our community understand what the impact volunteerism and a commitment to our town can make, hopefully that'll encourage others to come out and be part of, of something like this. And so just thank you as, as a resident for all that you and the small group of people that are dedicated to this project, continue or this, this group can, what you're doing for our community, it's really inspiring, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter.
Any other comments, questions, any, any from the board? Yes, Dan.
It's been fantastic, I've actually, as she says, I've done the Fourth of July thing now for a number of years. I've gone to some of the music things that they've had. It's just been some fantastic events, you know, the Halloween things. It's, it's great to have this group that have done so much for us in, in promoting the downtown area. On the tag sale, now, is that only along Main Street? Or are there people that can sign on and it gets put into a brochure or whatever, and can run them at their own locations?
It actually is at your own location. We abandoned the whole Main Street thing to coordinate people to come downtown was a little tricky. So one of our slides actually has last year's townwide tag sale map on it, Dan. We encourage you to look at it. So the map is, is available digitally, it's also available throughout town a couple of days beforehand. But yeah, we map it all out and we put them out there, it's a very nominal fee to participate, and that fee goes directly back into our programs, it's through the concert series.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And looking forward to Maple Fest.
It's going to be really fun this year, it really is, we've had a great group of people. The Maple by Moonlight Dinner is going to be phenomenal, please you guys sign up and participate. We'd love to see every single one of you guys there, it's just, it's really, it's going to be very special.
Are, are those applications or those reservations out yet, or?
They are, tickets are available, I can certainly ask Donna to email a link to you. Or I can, I probably have Pat's email, I can send you the link.
I'll send a link, I'll send a link to all the selectmen in the morning.
That would be, I'll do that. Thank you, Donna, that would be lovely.
Great, thank you.
Well, I don't want to, like I said, take you guys away.
Does anyone else have anything they want, they want to add? Well, thank you, thank you so much, thanks for taking the time and for sharing that with us. And again, thank you for all that you do, like, our community really benefits from, from the work clearly, and it's great that we can highlight this in the meeting, thank you.
Well, I appreciate you guys, so mark your calendars and we'll see you at an event soon.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
All right, good night. That moves us to item six, which is appointments and resignations. Claudia, would you like to take the first motion relative to Sharon Gerard?
Sure. So the proposed motion is move that the Board of Selectmen accept the, let's see, are we?
No.
Oh, here it is, okay, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirm the town manager's reappointment of Sharon Gerard as the municipal agent with the elderly for a four-year term to run through December 31, 2027.
Thank you, the motion has been read, is there any discussion? Okay, we will then vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Keith, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Tiffany, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, B is a Green Committee resignation and attaches a letter from John Mantra resigning his position on the Green Committee, so that was in the correspondence. Tiffany, would you be so kind as to read this proposed motion, please?
Sure, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of John Mantra from the Green Committee with regret, and thanks for his service to the town of Hebron.
Thank you, the motion has been read, is there any discussion? Discussion, okay, thank you. Move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note if you wish to abstain, Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Keith, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now, back to our illustrious town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's no secret right now, we're just entrenched in getting the budget numbers prepared for next month. Tonight, we'll be hopefully approving the CIP, a little explanation on where we, how we got there later on. Once again, earlier, prior to the meeting, there was a little quick discussion, we've been very busy with the latest snowstorm. We did have a few breakdowns that we're trying to get a few trucks back up and running, so we're fully staffed. So we'll continue to do that, that's keeping us pretty busy. I had a meeting yesterday with the Hebron superintendent of schools and the business managers regarding the CIP list and projects that are on there that aren't recommended to be funded in my recommendation, in my recommendation tonight. But told them we think the, the items are very important, and we're going to try to come up with another funding mechanism to move those projects forward. You'll see later on tonight, the CIP budget that I'm proposing is a million, three seventy-five, two, I'm sorry, five twenty-six. That's more than I normally recommend, but we'll get into that when we get into that item on the agenda. We got the new state police contract cost numbers, which is going up significantly. We also have a bump going in for our local police officers. We did a townwide salary survey with surrounding towns, and we're, we're hourly quite a bit less. So you'll be seeing that through the budget presentation as well. The playscape is going up at Vets Park, or at least it was until we had that, you know, ten, ten inches or more of snow. So that kind of put the brakes on that for a little bit, but we'll get back doing that as soon as we can. And just for an update, I can't speak a lot to it yet, but we're making headway on the damage that was done to the fields with the police department, and also we're making some headway on the hit and run on Millstream Road. So there'll be more information when we can supply it, but we're moving forward, which is a good point. And that's what I had for tonight, there's correspondence in your packet showing we got that grant, and I'm not sure what else we correspond, I think just a letter about Paul Forrest completing his probation. That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Andy. So we, based on the, the modification to the agendas previously agreed to, we'll now move into three items of new business, so nine A, B, and C as noted earlier. So Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nine A is the award of RFP, RFQ for Electrical Design Professional Engineering Services for the Ram Emergency Electrical Generator Project. It attaches a letter from the Public Billing Committee recommending the award of electrical design services for the Ram Emergency Electric Generator Project to Van Zelm engineers in the amount of $251,150. The Town/Ram have been awarded a $2 million grant through the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development Urban Action Grant Program to complete this project. I also have members of the Building Committee here with us tonight, and there's a proposed motion and some backup information on the firms, and they have their recommendation.
I appreciate that, the information and the details surrounding this. So I'm moving forward with the proposed motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the Electrical Design Services for the Ram Emergency Electric Generator Project to Van Zelm Engineers of Farmington, Connecticut in the amount of $251,150. So the motion has been read, discussion, questions from the board? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note if you wish to abstain, Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the, to the Building Committee for all the good, hard work that you do on behalf of the town. So thank you very much. Mr. Tierney?
Yes, I believe we're on to item nine B, which would be approve the FEMA assistance to firefighters' micro grant application. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll go halfway down the page here, and then we have the chief with us if there's any questions regarding this. So assistance to the firefighters' micro grant, fire departments and non-affiliated EMS organizations have a voluntary funding limitation choice within the application for any AFG program operations and safety program activities for no more than a cumulative federal share of $75,000. Micro grants are not an additional funding opportunity, but applications may be received additional consideration for an award. The selection of the voluntary micro grant option for eligible operations and safety activities does not impact an applicant's request for federal participation under the vehicle acquisition or regional programs. The Board wishes to apply for a FEMA assistance to the firefighters' micro grant for the acquisition of funds for a new stretcher and stretcher power load for one or one of our ambulances at an estimated total cost of $74,740.46. If awarded this grant, the town's estimated cost share per federal guidance would be $3,559 based on current costs. Here are the links for a few resources regarding the assistance to firefighters' grant program. And as I stated, there's a proposed motion, and we have the chief, I believe, on here for questions.
Okay, so what I'll do is, Dan, since I always pick on these, especially for these, these items, if you could go ahead and read the motion, and then during the discussion period, if we need some additional clarification from the chief, I, I think that would be a good time to do that. But let's get the motion on the table now, Dan.
Sure, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a grant application to FEMA assistance to firefighters' micro grant in the amount not to exceed $75,000 for the acquisition of a new stretcher and stretcher power load and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to sign any documents necessary to apply for accept and receive such grant as awarded.
Okay, thank you for the reading the proposed resolution, so I open it up to the board now for questions for clarification from the chief, since he's on the line. Anybody have anything for the chief or discussion at all, Keith? Oh, Dan, I'm sorry, well, let me finish with my discussion, Keith, no, you're good, Dan? Go ahead, you go next, I'm sorry. Thank you, Keith, Dan?
Yes, you want to just rehave Striker stretchers now, I believe? Do you want to state what the advantage of this stretcher is and how it becomes useful for the fire service?
Sure, first of all, thank you guys for, for having me this evening. So, as the chief mentioned, the type of stretcher, or the brand of stretcher that we use is called a Striker. And we've, we've traditionally used this brand of stretcher just because of their reliability and durability. So the current stretcher that this would have replaced is, is an early 2000 model. The new stretchers have been really modified, and the technology has advanced significantly since, since the purchase of the current stretchers that we have. For example, this particular stretcher will, will lift up to 700 pounds. So it's, it's a, it's a little bit wider, it's got a little beefier suspension and frame, again, to accommodate patients up to 700 pounds. It's also been redesigned, so it's more ergonomic for the, for the folks that are operating the stretcher, reducing the, the, the amount of times that the, the attendants have to bend over. You know, the stretcher's set to work at a, at a waist height level, again, to reduce fatigue and injuries to the, to the folks that are actually operating them. And what the stretcher actually does is, it, it's, it's all electric, battery powered, so we don't have to manually lift the stretcher and the patient. We push a button and it'll, it'll lift up. And then when we slide it into the ambulance, the, the second part of this, called the power load, is a device that comes out and literally picks the stretcher up off the ground, it takes all the weight off of it, and you can push it into the ambulance with two fingers. So it's, since its inception, this device and these devices have been, have been back savers. They're, they're not, they're not cheap, I remember the first stretcher that I bought for an ambulance was around $12,000, which was pretty expensive then. But these really, really make our jobs easier, and they make it more comfortable for the patients, safer for the patients. And, and as I stated, they're, they're absolutely 100% the biggest advantage of this system is, is the injuries that it prevents.
I had a question. I had a question. This is fascinating, and I'm amazed at the technology, also amazed at the price tag. So for something of this nature, significant investment, obviously, is there like a warranty or insurance on this piece of equipment?
Yep, that, that's actually a great question. In, in our proposal, there's actually some built-in maintenance plans for both the stretcher and the, the power load, the lifting mechanism. So, so we did build that in when we got these, these cost estimates from the vendor, because they're very expensive and they're very expensive to repair. So, yeah.
So it's not, it's not just WD-40, huh?
No, not anymore, it helps. But yeah, so when we were looking at this, the, the federal government actually allows you to include the maintenance programs in the grant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Hi, Dan.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, you know, I I ran the ambulance for, God, I was an EMT for what thirty something years. Back in my day, without these power loads and all, especially this time of year. You know, we were loading stretchers where literally our people would be sliding on ice. Pray to God. In fact, we actually had a stretcher go down. Thankfully, nothing ever happened with the patient. With these electric loads, it it helps. Not only the firefighters, the EMS people loading the the patients, but it also helps the patients. So this is definitely a a. Gigantic step forward in the EMS market, if you will, in the ambulance market. Slips and falls and back injuries are. A major issue with the fire service where, you know, for injuries. You know, that that's probably the majority of what our accidents are, are slips and falls and back injuries, and this. Hopefully will help to to minimize that, and there may even be. With it possibly some insurance savings. I don't know. But you know, the insurance companies, seeing that you have these kinds of products, may. You know, give us a little bit better rate. It can't hurt to let them know that we do have this technology.
Yeah, well said, just to. Especially from a worker's comp standpoint, it's actually a lot of workers comp companies will ask if you have these type of devices. So. So they're they're definitely looking at that.
Great. Any other discussion items or questions for the chief? Item? Hearing seeing none, the resolution has been read. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor. Please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
You've said it, aye.
Thank you Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you Tiffany, Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Good Dan, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you Claudia, Peter Casper, aye, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Yeah, since we're on that theme, Mr. Larson, would you continue, please, with reading the proposed? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. I didn't let Andy describe nine C. So I apologize, Mr. Tierney, nine C, please. And then Dan, when you're done, if you could move forward to resolution. Thanks.
That's okay. Thank you on that one, chief. This one is just as important, if not more. So. This is the proof of FEMA assistance to firefighters grant application. This is a rather large. Undertaking to submit for this grant. So thank you, chief, for. Taking the time and and I know you're gonna have to put a lot more time into filling this out. There's a lot of work here, but. To approve the FEMA systems firefighter grant application, the fire department wishes to apply for FEMA assistance to the firefighters grant for acquisition. Of funds for a new rescue slash pumper that will replace two existing vehicles. At an estimated cost of one million fifty thousand dollars. If awarded this grant, the town's estimated cost share per federal guidelines would be forty seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars based on current cost. This cost share is based on a maximum. Possible award of a million dollars, which is based upon population per federal guidelines. Once again, here are the links. For a few resources regarding the assistance to firefighters grants program. And then the chief had supplied the actual unfilled or not filled out grant in the packet as well. And then, as always, there is a proposed resolution. Donna does a great job of preparing all these resolutions. So thank you, Donna, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna have ask Dan again to read this next resolution and then. Prior to discussing, since Claudia thought the stretcher was expensive. I'm gonna ask the chief maybe for a little more context. I know you've covered this in the past, so maybe it's a brief, some brief context regarding the cost and. Sort of the approach and the need just to refresh everyone's memory who may be listening for the first time. So. And then we'll open it up, obviously, for additional discussion. So Dan, if you could proceed to read the proposed resolution, please.
Sure, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve. A grant application to FEMA assistance to firefighters in the amount of one million dollars for the acquisition. Of a new rescue pumper and authorize Andrew J Tierney Town Manager to sign any documents. Necessary to apply for accept and receive such grant if awarded.
Thank you. And chief, if you could just provide a little more context, I think that would be helpful as we move to the discussion component of this. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Just so in in no particular order. Actually, one thing that I I wanted to just mention about the federal program. The assistance to firefighters grants. So for for this year, they're actually, the the federal government has allocated three hundred and twenty four million dollars to this program nationwide. And they estimate that they're going to award two thousand grants. So. So it's a very competitive process, but it it's definitely one that that we should take the time to to and and. The time and effort to to submit an application. Or applications. So just a little history about the 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 fire apparatus. So. What our our strategic plan was would be to replace a nineteen ninety six pumper. And a heavy rescue truck. Basically combine the two two pieces of apparatus into one for for a couple reasons. Number one, we really don't have the staffing to fully operate all of our fleet. And and number two, this combined piece, this this fire engine that would carry rescue tools as well. Enables us to basically get two pieces of apparatus to the scene in one. With less staffing. So. Modern rescue equipment is is primarily all battery operated now, so we don't really need the big truck with all the hydraulic pumps and. And such. Everything is is a lot more compact, less room, so we can really fully outfit this one piece or could outfit this one piece. With all the necessary necessary firefighting and rescue equipment. You know, not only would that with reduced staffing, again, give us two pieces in in one. But it also less maintenance costs, a little smaller fleet. Excuse me, less insurance cost, again, less maintenance. And less expense overall. So. You know, the the nineteen ninety six pumper. That this would would replace is currently. Sorry about that. Got to turn that down. The nineteen ninety six pumper that this would replace is currently at company three. Company one, our primary piece is a nineteen ninety eight, so it's not that much newer. So our again, our plan would be this new piece of apparatus would come to to headquarters here in the center of town. And then the nineteen ninety eight pumper that's here would go back to company three where it originally came from. Again, this this truck would be would be outfit with the same type of battery operated rescue tools. That we purchased a few years ago through ARPA funds. So. Long overdue. Our our fleet's getting a little a little tired in some spots, and I think this is a great opportunity if if we were successful and and. And we're granted this or these funds, rather, this would be a huge improvement in addition to to our fleet and the and the public safety in town.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for that additional context. Discussion from the board or questions for the chief? Dan, go ahead.
I'm gonna hate my hand. Couple of things. Been around for a lot of years. You want to explain years ago, it was always deemed that when you try to get one piece of equipment doing too many things. It didn't do any of them well. A, do you want to address that, please? B, do you want to address ISO and how this would or would not affect ISO ratings? And you may want to explain just what ISO is. And. We'll go go from there, I guess.
Okay, so it just in reversed order. So. So the town of Hebron is evaluated by ISO, which is Insurance Services Office. And what they do is they look at a community. And they assign a it's called a public protection class. And and on a scale of one to ten, they look at the town and they evaluate. Your fire protection, your staffing. The the dispatch center that dispatches us to calls. They take all this different information and they come up with this public protection class. One being the absolute best, which is like a Hartford or a Bridgeport or a large city. Ten being the absolute worst, which means pretty much you don't have any fire protection. So we have a very good. Protection class. We're we're a protection class four, which. Is is very uncommon for a a town of of our size. I've been very fortunate. That we've got staffing and 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 we've got great water supply in town. And and that's helped us achieve that great that great protection class. But the big benefit of that are the are the folks that own property. So businesses that are in town. When their insurance company is looking at a rate to charge them, they look at the protection class. The lower the protection class, the better rate they get. The same also applies to your homeowner's insurance. The lower the protection class, the lower the rate on your on your homeowner's insurance. So. There's a significant savings. Again, we're a protection class four from a four to a nine, which we were years ago. So. So that's a huge benefit. They do look at fire apparatus and what you have for fire apparatus. But primarily, they're looking at what you have for. The ISO is more concerned with firefighting apparatus, so that they want to know how much water you have, how many pumpers you have. They look at the square miles in the town. And they do their own calculations that and and they come up with a formula that says, well, based on a town your size, you should have. X number of pumpers and X number of ladders if you have tall buildings, ladder trucks. So we're 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 in very good shape with ISO. In in twenty twenty one, we went through our last review. And and reaffirmed our our protection class then. So we're in great shape here. So. Deleting or. Combining two trucks into one from an ISO standpoint. Because we're not getting rid of any water. We're still keeping the same amount of water. So ISO protection class, there wouldn't be any negative effect. To go to the the first question, chief, as far as, you know, sometimes putting too many eggs in one basket is not a good good thing. Which I would I would agree with in in some cases. In this case. Again, with modern technology and the way the tools are designed, in the past, we had to have a separate. Rescue truck, a separate toolbox to carry all this stuff. It's a lot more compact now. Again, it's most of it now is all battery operated. So we don't have the, we don't need the room for the pumps and the cord reels and and all that extra. All that extra stuff. So. Most towns around us within the past few years, again, primarily because of staffing, have gone this route. You know, our neighbors in Columbia just took delivery of of a rescue pumper last year, replacing the same thing. The town of Thailand has two or three now. Mansfield has. Free of these trucks. Colchester just took delivery of a couple of brand new pumpers that are set up with rescue capabilities as well. So. I can certainly provide you more references, but but. I don't want to say it's the it's it's the trend, but this is what's happening in the fire service now. Because again, we are operating with less staffing and it gives us the ability to get all the tools we need to the scene and 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 with less apparatus.
So it'd be safe to say that we're not the guinea pigs on this. Other towns have done it. It's been successful.
Yes, yeah, good, good, good point. Other towns have done it. It's been very successful. Yeah, like I said, Columbia just took delivery of theirs last year. It's actually been, it's come mutually to us a couple of times. They're very pleased with it, and and some of the other departments I've mentioned have been doing it for probably five, six years now. And it's worked out well. So. Thank you.
Their board questions, discussion. Keith.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your explanation on some of those topics. You had mentioned about, you know, making a strategic decision on this and how some of the surrounding towns have also gone the same way. But with everybody kind of going the same way, is this affecting? Or or maybe you could give a little bit more background on how this might affect the mutual aid agreements between the towns.
Yep, great, great question. So. Just as an example, right now, if we get a report of a serious motor vehicle accident. If we get a report of a serious motor vehicle accident, we automatically have, and it's set up in our in our in our mutual aid agreements. We have another department that's automatically sending another ambulance. And another rescue truck and or rescue pumper to come assist us. So from a mutual aid standpoint. I wouldn't anticipate any any issues or negative effects by going this route. Because again, we we've always had a practice. If it if it sounds bad and it looks bad, we're automatically bringing in extra help right off the right off the the get go. So we have redundancies and we have backups in, you know, the rescue equipment and the firefighting capabilities. Again, coming in right off the rip.
Okay, thank you Tiffany, Claudia, anything you wish to add? Or discuss? Okay. Thank you. I teach us some one quick thing for me, and maybe it's been answered in the past, and I I missed it. When you apply for grants, is it all or nothing? Or could you could this program give us two hundred thousand, half a million, or is it the full amount or?
Yeah, good question. So typically what they do, typically. If we apply for a rescue pumper and we're and we're successful and they award it to us. What they'll do when they make that award is is they actually look at the market. And and they'll look at the market and say, hey, you know, based on current. Sales and deliveries of similar apparatus. You know. You can get one, and I'm just making this up. You can get one for eight fifty. So we're going to reduce your award because these four manufacturers can produce what you're looking for for approximately that that amount of money. So they they can reduce it. But but typically, they're they're going to look at what the market's doing with with that style and type of apparatus before they do that.
So they're typically looking when they award the grants is to try to fulfill the, you know, the grant applications for the. The the number that they've looked for. They don't try to spread the money out. They try to focus on the. The number that you articulated in your in your your house.
Right, so so they'll focus on that and they'll focus on the need to. They'll look at, so they'll look at that particular type and design of apparatus. So so it's possible when that happens. That they could say, yeah, you know what, we're going to give you nine hundred because we think you can, based on our research, you can get one for that amount.
Okay, thank you very much. Without any additional discussion, thank you, chief. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, but please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith said it, aye.
Keith Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Tiffany, Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
You Dan, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Chief, for your efforts and and obviously for joining us tonight to outline both these initiatives.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. If anybody needs me, I'm gonna be locked in my office for the next three and a half weeks, so. But I appreciate all your help. Yep, I I appreciate the help from Andy and Donna at Town Hall getting this all put together. But I've already talked to Lori a couple of times because we're gonna need some information from Lori when we get going on this. She's been phenomenal. So. I'm a little nervous. I'm a little excited, but we'll get this going and we'll we'll keep our fingers crossed and hopefully we we're successful.
And chief.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Good night, Mr. Tierney. I think that moves us back to or to the continuation of old business.
Yes, I believe we're on eight A, which would be American Rescue. American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Update. We continue. As we do for each board of selectmen to. Adjust the sheet as we have more information or more projects. Get completed or funding is available. For for tonight's discussion underneath this. Tiffany had asked that we give an update on the playscape for the Gillied Hill Elementary School. So where that where that stands now as the update is, is we purchased or they have purchased. The playscape and it's. at the manufacturer's way to be delivered. What what transpired is they, the school and Parks and Recs Director met on several occasions and they picked a location which is down behind or the bottom of that parking lot down the hill by the field, the ball field. And in review of that plan, and to go to planning and zoning, because this is a new piece of equipment we have set to expect that we have setbacks. So it required planning and zoning approval. And in review of that, it would also take a building inspector's permit to erect that. And when it came in to review, it was noticed that it wasn't really ADA compliant, the access to that area. So unfortunately, we had a meeting set up for the 13th, which was the snowstorm, and we had to cancel that. There was no school and a few people weren't available. So we're going to reschedule that meeting and we're going to sit down with the town engineer, the town planner, and the principal, the superintendent, and the business manager, and hopefully come up with an alternative area or a plan up at the school that would accept this so we can keep that that project moving. So that's the, that's the update on that project. I'm not sure if there's any questions.
Well, Tiffany, I'll turn to you first since you raised the issue. Any questions or additional information you're looking for here?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious. In comparison of the location to where the fields are now, I mean, I would argue the field is an ADA compliant in and of itself because there's that giant, there's that hill that slopes down to get to the field. So exactly what about the location makes it less ADA compliant than where the field is now? Because I don't really see, I don't, I don't really understand. If someone could clarify that, that'd be great.
Yeah, great question. I would have to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's something that I wasn't involved in originally. On the onset, that's why I wanted the people in charge or moving forward with that project to keep the town planner in the loop. And somehow it got further along without till the end, when it came into the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval that this came up. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Tiffany, that the field is down there. I guess they do use that access to the field. So I don't know if it's because it's a new new erection of 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 a placate that's going to invite the public from the parking lot versus what's already existing and grandfathered in. I don't, I don't have your answer myself, but I can try to get you one.
And to be clear, I I want us to be in compliance. But I would argue if that section isn't in compliance, then is the rest of the field in compliance, you know what I mean? So I I don't know that we should take a piecemeal approach to it. So some clarification on that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I will follow up. I'm pretty sure my my explanation was accurate. It's because it's a new application in front of them and the existing situation is, it's just that it's been existing. So they're not really ruling on something that's already there and approved. But now that they're being faced with something new, the building official doesn't feel that that meets the ADA requirements. But I'll, I'll reach out to him and the town planner, see if we can, and I'll send it out in an email, the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board on this topic? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item eight B, which is the Department of Public Action Committee update, which is eight. So thank you for that. So our next meeting is on Tuesday and we're making good progress. The focus really is the continuation of our communication strategy. It's one of our main objectives on on this project as we move forward. And and so we're probably a couple of weeks away from having detail of the current updates on the town website. The town website's ready. So thank you for, to Donna and the town for doing that. And and so that's, that's out there now in terms of its completion. I mean, ready. So that's the next thing that you'll see. Other, well, in addition to, there was a, I was interviewed by the River East. That article is in the current River East, or the most current River East will will highlight the the updates. And so they interviewed me. So we talked for about an hour. I, and one of the reasons why the website is so important and driving people to that website for current and accurate information is I did know in in the article I read briefly that there is actually one misstatement in there regarding open space associated with the the project, the EverSource project, or the EverSource land and a reference to open space. That's not accurate. I was the one interviewed. I understand completely how it works, but for whatever reason, that that was not accurately reported on. So I have to take ownership of that. And so that's a good reason why, even though I like what the River East does and Florida is fine, but that's just, it's it's an inaccurate interpretation of an item. And that's where the FAQ section on the website would be so important because it, there's a reference to open space in the article, which isn't accurate. It's not a critical item, it's just not accurate. And so that's where the FAQ section, which is why we're driving that and saying, hey, there was a note in the River East about this or a question about open space pertaining to the land over there. Here's, here's the actual accuracy of that. So that's just an update on that. So we'll keep, we'll keep working with that, with that committee and communication strategy. And next steps will be the website. So any, any questions on the board on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one. Did you, did you send a correction to the River East? So at least they can publish a correction on the first page or when you sent it?
Ready. Yeah, I just read, I literally just read it before, online before the meeting. So I just, in preparation with the meeting, so I have not contacted the River East yet. But I will.
Yeah, I might recommend that we, yeah, I might recommend we do that. At least it's in the record in the newspaper. I mean, we all know, most people don't read the corrections in a newspaper, but at least that way it's there and then we can clarify and then say, yeah.
Yep, yep. No, that's a good suggestion and I have not done that. Again, I just saw it and I go, that's, that that reference was inaccurate. It clearly needs to be addressed. And so I thank you for that. I will do that. Just have not done it yet. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Andy, are you raising me, Andy, or are you?
Yeah, so Tiffany's right. And there was a letter to the editor in the last edition of the River East that alluded that the EverSource had already agreed to sell us the property. That is not really a factual statement at this point. They have agreed to consider it. And the latest update I have from EverSource is that that land is considered surplus, which is a good thing. But there's still a couple more hurdles we have to go through before they would give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down that that is going to be available. So I just want to, just a clarification, not trying to point any fingers, but some people may think that that's already been approved, which it has.
Yeah, I, yeah, and that's a good point, Andy. And in the article, it I, I think that's clear in the article that what you're saying is, I mean, it should be clear in the article as well. Yeah, no, I literally just read it before and wondering, and so I read it like an hour ago, so online. So I, I, at least that's an opportunity to provide some clarification there as well. So that's a, that's a good point. But yeah.
On that EverSource property, has it even been determined by the engineers that the property in question is even buildable? Were the areas that would need to be built upon? Or, you know, is is there wetlands? Because I know there are wetlands on there. How do they interfere or or impact where the actual quote unquote building might end up being? Do we even know that yet?
Yeah, with the original plans of the 32 acres, two and a half acres were, or approximately two and a half acres were deemed to be buildable. The rest of it was not. Andy, I don't know if you want to provide any context there.
Yeah, so once again, it's a tight site. It's a 19 acre site, 15 acre cap landfill that you can't build upon. So any additional space would help us to expand on the existing parcel. When we originally looked to purchase that, we were unaware that it was manmade wetlands on it. And then wetlands are wetlands. The, the plan is now is to move forward and even if we can get that obtainable quarter, which is about two and a half to three acres, we could maybe expand or extend the transfer station out into that area and still maintain it and still hopefully come up with enough, enough usable land to try to, you know, build what we need to fulfill the requirements that they're looking for. So the, the surveys dictated us to do that and we're going to do the best we can and hopefully come out with something that's, you know, definitely going to be usable, fit the bill, but also be affordable. So that's, that's where we are. But we would have to buy the whole parcel from EverSource. They're not interested in in subdividing it. There was a potential back there for open space that meets up with the airline trail, but that's another discussion for another day.
Yeah, and that, as I said, Dan, the intent is that the reference to open spaces, as Andy's point is that there might be some ancillary benefit to the purchase of the land associated with a current open space land. That was it. It wasn't the, the suggestion that we could use open space, but that the additional, that the entire parcel wouldn't, even though it's limited for the the actual construction of the site or utilization of the site, it would be some benefit from the balance of the acreage purchased because there would be a piece of any way that could be considered a potential benefit associated with our open space plan. But a lot more work to do, very complex issue. Other questions on this? Comments? Seeing none from the board. So that moves us to C is not, we don't need any update on C. So D is our charter revision. So, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charter Revision Commission update. Tonight's the night. Attached is a resolution to be adopted to establish the Charter Revision Commission. Also attached is a proposed charge which should be reviewed and finalized by the board before the resolution is adopted. The charter schedule is also attached. To date, there's 12 people that have expressed interest in being appointed to the Charter Revision Commission. Attached are emails from the selectmen indicating their selections of the members to serve. And then there's a list of Connecticut General Statutes and the Commission Appointment Membership Duties Reports, determinations, all listed, and there's highlighted information consisting of not fewer than five or more than 15 electors, no more than one third of whom may hold any public office in the municipality, and no more than a bare majority of whom shall be members of any one political party. So there's some balancing that guys have to do there. I wish everybody luck, but unfortunately, we can't pick everybody. We we're going to try to do the best, you guys are going to try to the best you can to meet those qualifications and try to make it as even as possible, I believe. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And and just before I turn it over to have the proposed resolution read, just want to thank everybody on the board. I know this has been a long standing issue that has gone on for some time and appreciate all the time and energy that has gone into the consideration of the Charter Revision Commission's members and all the content associated with that and the preparation for moving forward with the resolution. So with that, I, if I could ask Mr. Pettit to read the proposed resolution.
Yes, thank you. Whereas the Board of Selectmen has received from the town manager a list of items requiring attention of a Charter Revision Commission. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has reviewed this list and other concerns and deemed that its meeting of January 18th, 2024, that it is appropriate to appoint a Charter Revision Commission pursuant to the provisions of the Hebron Town Charter, Chapter 12, Section 1207, and Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 99, concerning municipal charters and special acts. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has identified seven individuals to duly constitute a Charter Revision Commission as provided for in Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 99, Section 7-190, by reason of not more than one third of its members to hold any public office, not more than a bare majority is from any one political party, a seven-member commission falls within the allowable limits of not fewer than five, nor more than 15 electors, and all identified individuals are properly registered electors residing within the town of Hebron. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Selectmen that there shall be a seven-member Town of Hebron Charter Revision Commission of 2024, 2025 with the following individuals to serve as its members. Donna Lanza, Jessica Stewart, Allegra Weir, Terry McManus, Michelle Gothier, Adam Ackman, and Heather Pettit. And said members shall determine their own officers and rules of procedure consistent with Connecticut law. Be it further resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the charge to the 2024, 2025 Charter Revision Commission based on the attached or amended list of areas identified for consideration or review. And be it further resolved, the Charter Revision Commission shall review at least the recommended items for consideration reviewed by the Board of Selectmen and such other matters as may properly come before it, or as they determine to be in the best interest of the town of Hebron. To act in accordance with statutory requirements to convene a minimum of two public hearings, one prior to commencing work, and a second regarding their recommendations for amendment to the Board of Selectmen, and to conduct such other meetings as may be required by law or deemed necessary by them to adequately inform Hebron voters about the recommended changes. It is further requested that the Charter Revision Commission complete its work to meet deadlines for a November 4th, 2025 referendum vote as outlined in the 2024, 2025 Charter Revision Schedule with submission of the draft report to the Board of Selectmen on or before May 1st, 2025, and to promote broad voter participation in the consideration of charter revisions as recommended for vote by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much. And and before we move forward, Mr. Tuni, based on your original description, and before we vote on the resolution, you had mentioned any potential revisions to the items identified as here is to make sure I understand what's moving forward. Should we be discussing that first? If there's any revision to this to the, the items identified?
Yeah, as it stated earlier in the information, you should, the items that you want to charge the commission with, you should refine or add or delete or agree upon as as the board, what you want to move forward and have the commission, you know, actually review, give a directive from the Board of Selectmen.
All right, but we should do that. If, I know we've been looking at this list, we should do that before we vote on the resolution because that, is that from a timing perspective, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So, and obviously the intercourse, the recommendations, and then the names, they don't line up exactly. So there's the folks, I guess, some additional time to think that through. Is there anything? As we look at these, the items identified, you've been identified in the past, is there anything about further reflection that you feel, like the new, the board feels we should be taking out or adding to this list?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, oh, yes, go ahead, go ahead. Tiffany, yes, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make completely certain that the board was comfortable keeping item 14 on for consideration. We had some great discussion about whether that's actually a charter issue or is that? So I'm, I'm raising it again. I, I am noncommittal either way. I just want to make sure we're comfortable keeping it on there as a charter issue as opposed to a staffing, et cetera, kind of issue.
Okay, that's a good point. I know, Keith, you had raised concerns about that as well in terms of, you know, adding to that, 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 that point in the past about whether or not this was, even though it might be good dialogue, whether or not it really was appropriate for a decision within this process. Is that, do you want to add any comments on that? I'm just thinking about our, some of our previous discussions.
Yeah, as, thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as far as our previous discussions were concerned, I know that, you know, we, we had kind of gone back and forth previously on timelines versus a compressed schedule and expanded schedule. And I have no problem with this staying in because in our final recommendations to move to referendum, I think at that point would be, it would be easy enough for us to remove it. However, the interaction However, the interaction that the Charter Commission would be able to have with the public as far as gathering public input, doing some of the background research on things would be beneficial to not just the Board of Selectmen, but the town administrators as well, um, to gather information to move forward with this in a non-charter related, um, vision. Now, when we had the compressed schedule, we didn't want to add that in because it would detract from other things. But with the expanded schedule that we have now of 20 plus months, I don't see a problem with allowing the Charter Commission members to take up some of that legwork on our behalf and gather input from, you know, residents, electors, um, um, you know, different area experts and kind of get us informed on how to best move forward, whether that's as part of the charter, which I strongly doubt, or whether it's in another way, you know, through an MOU or an MOA. So I'm fine with leaving it in as is.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Andy. Want to add something? Thanks.
Yeah, so on this, on this item, I'm non-committal either. I just want to express, even though you guys think it's, you've got all this time, you do have more time than the compressing. I would just recommend, if you think this is something that it's not going to be a part of the charter, then I wouldn't want to waste the Charter's, uh, Commission's time doing the legwork. I think if, if the entities aren't there yet and you don't think this is a charter item, I'm agreeing with Keith in one way, but I'm agreeing with Heather in another that if you don't think this is the work of the Charter Commission, then that, this is the night to probably pull that out.
Okay. All right, Dan, go ahead.
Uh, agreeing with Andy, and I think Andy meant to say Tiffany.
I did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I just get that correction. Um, I think there's a number of things that need to be looked at within the next few years, within the entire school system and the entire, uh, educational structure of, of not only Hebron, but of, of Ram, of the other two towns that are involved with Ram. Um, and I don't think it's a charter thing, but at the same time, if for whatever reason it becomes a charter issue, it could then be addressed at that time. Um, you know, so I, I'm on the fence whether to take it out or leave it in. I don't think it makes any difference. Uh, but I think there's other issues that need to be looked at, you know, with the educational system within, within the three communities. And, um, I would hate to have a lot of time spent on this. Uh, I think you're going to need another, another group, um, for that other whole aspect of things.
Okay. Claudia, anything you wish to add to this number 14 discussion?
So if, if, when the commission addresses all of these points and say, just this scenario, uh, they spend a considerable amount of time on items one through 13, and they've run out of time, so to speak, so they can't get to 14, how does, how is that addressed? Because I assume they're going to approach these topics by order of importance? Not sure. Or do they just go by what's on here numerically?
What, Andy?
So the charges, the charge, if you leave it on here, they have to, um, review and do that work and bring back a recommendation. I, I, it could be one and 13, and if they're getting caught up, not getting to the 14, it's, it's still part of the charge that they were supposed to review for the charter. So I would, if, if even that's a concern, that might be another reason to consider removing this.
And then the order in which these issues are listed, it, does that have any importance at all?
I don't think they're prioritized. I think Donna, I'll reach out to Donna. I think we just put them in numerical order, just to number them. I don't think it has any, um, uh, preference or they're, they're in, uh, you know, um.
And then from a, like a project management perspective, how, how are we assured that the committee is going to be, um, addressing the issues in a timely manner? Is there someone, is there going to be a chair of the commission that's going to ensure that that happens in a timely manner within the 20-month time range? How does that typically work?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll elect their own, their own chair and vice chair. And then, um, giving kudos to Donna. Donna's done this quite a few times now. She'll be there to give guidance and our offices are, uh, questions to the town attorney in between meetings, come back with, uh, responses to questions. Keith, Keith also has been on it before. I know he's not slighted to go on this one, but, um, he's worked with Donna and Donna keeps a, keeps him in check.
And then just one last question about, um, time and, uh, going down the list. Uh, do you feel that the 20-month time period will, the commission will be, I guess they have to, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing, the only thing I would suggest, and I, I think that's probably going to happen anyways, is the biification. There was already a lot of work already done on that and this, and the still, the state still, we first to that, um, study. So I would, I would think you would dust that off and at least, um, look into that a little bit to, um, see what that produced. That might shave some time off of that very lengthy topic. A lot of that heavy lifting was already done.
Gotcha. And, uh, as far as, um, opining on?
I, I can't hear.
Sorry, there was a free time call coming in on my, on my computer. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, the only thing I guess that, that I'll opine on is, uh, just at, at glance, item 14 for me is more of a, a personnel kind of conversation as opposed to it being in a charter, a town charter. Um, so if you were to ask me, would I, sorry. Apologize again. Um, I would, I would say to strike it, number 14. That's my opinion.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, even though there's definitely discussion on both sides, I'm hearing enough of a consensus that the suggestion is to strike it. Um, and my bias would be to ask the board to consider striking it based on the comments that I've just heard, because I think we need to come forward with, uh, very definitive items, uh, that need to get addressed. Um, and so would the board agree to striking this? Dan, you have your hand up? Sorry, I missed it.
He's on mute.
You're on mute, you're on mute, Dan.
You're muted, Dan.
Yep. I would agree to striking this. Uh, one of the other things Claudia to understand too is that once the board is established, they can, they do have legal right to address anything they pretty much feel like addressing. You know, so, uh, they, for whatever reason, may still say, you know what, that was something that was on there and it got struck off of the, the list, but, you know, if they still want to have a discussion on it, they can. You know, they are not just limited to these, uh, items that we have proposed.
But could come back up. So, um, all right, so I'm hearing a, a majority anyway that would probably, would, would suggest that this be stricken, uh, at least from the charge of giving the, a definitive direction on items that we must be discussed. Keith, I know you were providing comments around both sides. Are you comfortable with us striking this item for this, at this juncture?
I'm fine with that, yes. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm, everyone I'm seeing, yeah, just, I'm not, uh, Claudia, Tiffany, yes, Dan? Okay, so why don't we strike item, item 14? Um, what other items? I had one, but, um, if anyone else on the board or, well, I'll just throw mine out since I just started to talk about it. I wanted to just ask, um, on number seven. Please refresh my memory. Maybe I've got a tick on Andy here is, um, why are we at, asking specific, having specific, these couple of specific committees be pointed as town, why, or why is this specific to these areas? I just, I'm sorry, I just, I'm not recalling why. Andy, could you provide me an update on that, please? You're on mute. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, when we put the list out, we just took comments and put them down as they came, but I mean, I've got to agree with you. I think, you know, that the charter is the Bible. That's what my job is to refer to the charter, make sure we're compliant in it. To memorialize advisory committees like the Green Committee or the Housing Choices Advisory Committee, I think that you, you have other elected boards where, where people are voted and, uh, they have, uh, planning and zoning where they have, you know, rules, regulations, those are listed in the charter because that's, um, you know, a commission where these are advisory committees to the Board of Selectmen. It's just my opinion. You guys can do whatever you want, but I, I don't think they belong in the charter.
Yeah, and I have nothing against, it didn't, it was considered, considered addition of, it didn't really matter. I don't want anything or against these, these items listed, but it just seemed to me that I, I wasn't sure that this was the right place for, for that. Uh, so I throw that out and obviously Andy's provided some comments as well. The rest of the board on, on item seven. And just again, is it the right place for it? Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I'm, again, I'm just drawing off of what happened at, at the last session. Um, you know, we discussed, uh, committees and, and other appointed things which were already in the charter. Um, things like, you know, the bicentennial commission and stuff like that. Um, the things that, you know, are, are passed and done. And, and I believe in, in previous years, some, you know, uh, selectmen that were on the board previously have brought up the fact that we as the Board of Selectmen can set committees to be appointed or dissolved or whatever, at, at whatever time and place, you know, we desire. Once they fulfill their mission, um, in support of the Board of Selectmen, or, or once we find that we, we have a need that they, that we need additional help with. This has always been something that's kind of been on the sidelines to look at, at boards that are there. I mean, I don't have a huge problem with these being considered as additions because, you know, generally the Charter Revision Commission is also going to look at the stuff in the charter and ask themselves, does anything here, should it be removed as well? Um, that's always a question that comes up. It's kind of in the back of everybody's mind. I, I mean, I'm fine with leaving it as is. I don't want the, the Charter Revision Commission to think that they have to, like, put a ton of time into this. And, and kind of to answer Claudia's, uh, point from earlier, all, all of these charges do have to be answered, but some of those answers can be as simple as, uh, number six, we looked at it, we're happy with the charter the way it stands, no recommendation for changes. And that's literally their response to us. Um, you know, and, and anything that they give us a lengthy response on doesn't necessarily mean that we have to push it to, um, you know, referendum either. Uh, there's, there's going to be some back and forth as this, as this progresses through the different stages. Um, you know, I'm fine with it being on there right now. Are they going to have to respond to each one of those points? Yes. Uh, could we reduce number seven to just say, review, uh, review appointed town boards? And that way they look at any possible additions or any possible subtractions without specifics. That's fine too. But, you know, it, it's a common ask.
Okay, thank you very much. Other comments on that? I appreciate the context there, Keith. Thank you. Other comments, uh, Tiffany, anything on that item for us all to think about?
Yeah, um, I, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that, um, with Keith's amendment to that, to just look at it and, you know, consider it. Um, so, I mean, if we wanted to remove the three individual committees, but just have it be a more broad look at that section and to see if there's a recommendation provided, I'm open to that and I'm open to keeping it as is. So either way works for me.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Uh, I just, yep, I just want to look at the aspect of if it is in the town charter and we deem that a committee is no longer necessary, that would tie our hands. Uh, I'm not sure legally how or, or, or what that would lock us into doing or not being able to do. Uh, these are advisory committees as well as many others that the Board of Selectmen have, have, uh, appointed. Would this give them more power than was anticipated? I don't know the answers. Uh, but I want to make sure that we're not tying our hands also.
Okay, Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, no, uh, Dan is a hundred percent right. If it's in the charter, we can't dissolve it, even though it's, it's a selectman-appointed board. Because it's in the charter, it would have to wait until it came out of the charter and then we'd be able to dissolve it, which is, you know, part of the reason why the bicentennial commission or, or whatever is still in there. You know, but the other thing is, just like with that commission, we just don't appoint anybody. And so the commission is out there with no members and so it doesn't do any work and it just sits out there with a name. Um, so, you know, there's ways around, um, having something in charter that we don't really need. We just don't appoint anybody to it. But I, I agree with Dan's point of it just clutters things and makes things more complicated when we could just be appointing or, or, you know, establishing and dissolving these as they are needed in a more flexible manner without having them necessarily memorialized i- in something like the charter.
So with that said, i- is, do we need a review of the town? Would you recommend, Keith, having served this before, the review of the town boards or at least review of section 706 is, is approved and charged? Was it, at least had a look at it?
Yeah, yeah, I would definitely, I would definitely keep seven, um, you know, kind of to my, to the earlier point. I don't necessarily think we need to add one, two, and three. But again, it's easy enough for the Charter Commission to say, we looked at seven dash two and, um, we think that the charter is fine as is, and that's their recommendation. It's done. You know, um, it, it's a little more paperwork for them, but, you know.
Got it. Okay, Claudia?
Yeah, just real quick on number seven, I would, I would support removing the, the itemized list of the specific positions or committees. Leave it more generally and maybe re- rename number seven, review of appointed town boards, something to that effect.
Okay. All right. I think there's consensus that we want to remove, will remove, uh, the three, uh, the three specific references and will retain the, uh, the, the appropriate wording associated review of the section noted. Everyone comfortable with that on the board? So the hands are away. Okay, so that's that one. Thank you. And is there anything else, uh, from anyone else that you wish, uh, before we move to voting on the resolution, uh, in this, uh, document? Okay, and I just, uh, because this is such an important, uh, uh, sort of, uh, important charge for us. Andy, is there anything else from your perspective that you had hope that we would review associated with this document? We don't want to miss anything of the discussions considering the importance of this.
No, that was the only, like I said, if 14, I agree, if you're not, if you're not going to have that, why have the Charter Commission do all that work? If that's not going to be a charter item, I think you could form a committee and do that work, uh, as Dan, Dan referred to, and, and I, I totally agree with number seven being more broad. I didn't have any problem with any one of those uh, boards or commissions, but Keith stated it right. You're taking the power away from the Board of Selectmen to all of that and you're memorializing advisory boards in the charter where normally they're, they're actually, you know, commissions. Otherwise, these are advisory committees to the board. So I think you guys have a good solution and I support it.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the dialogue. This is, is so important on that we do this right and we have to make compromises and we have to make difficult decisions. Uh, but as been stated before, it is referenced as the bible for the town and when we are making decisions that, um, future boards have to, have to live with as well ultimately. So, um, thank you for all the time and energy spent, the discussion, you know, it's been, been a process. So. So, the resolution has been read, we've made adjustments to the charges. Andy, your mic's on, are you wanting to add something or are you good?
No, I'm good, sorry.
Oh no, I thought, I didn't know, I didn't, I turned away for a second and I saw. Okay, and so based on the revisions that were made to change number seven as noted and to eliminate fourteen. Mr. Pettit, we went through the resolution and read a proposed membership. So based on that, I'd like to move forward with a vote. All those in favor of what I just summarized in the resolution that Keith has read? Please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, but please note if you wish to abstain, Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye, the resolutions with the amendments noted passes unanimously. Thank you very much for all the work that was done in this process. And thank you again to everyone who's expressed interest and unfortunately, as we noted before, it was not, not, everyone can participate. But thank you so much for everyone's interest and I continue to encourage everyone to look for opportunities to volunteer. So thank you again, all right, Mr. Tierney? That we move to eight E. Yeah, thank you, Tiffany?
Right, so before we move on, did we choose the people to be on the Charter Revision Commission?
They were embedded into the resolution that was read, yes.
Okay, and that was, is that going to be voted on separately, that's all part of the resolution, Donna?
Embedded into the, oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was part of the.
No, it was, it was part of the resolution, Keith read the names into the resolution.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, yes, Housing Choices Advisory Committee, Matt, I apologize, I didn't move you up earlier. So I'll have to take you out to lunch tomorrow. Housing Choices Advisory Committee, a taxidermist member for Matthew Burdo, town planner, with recommendations on the appointments of the Housing Choices Advisory Committee recently created by adoption of an ordinance. And then there is a proposed motion and then there's the list of names that are suggested.
So what I'd like to do is I would like to ask Claudia if you would be so kind as to read the motion and then as again, part of the discussion, we'll turn to Matt for any context or questions that he can answer prior to our vote. So Claudia, if you'd be so kind as to read the proposed motion.
Sure can. Move that pursuant to Hebron Town Code Section 14-22. The Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint the following Hebron electors to the Housing Choices Advisory Committee. Pamela Atwood, D., regular. Stephen Wells, U., regular. Lillian Rhodes, D., regular. Jim Cilio, U., regular. Scott Kaufman, R., regular, and Florence O'Sullivan, D., alternate.
Hey, thank you for reading the proposed motion, we'll move to the discussion. Matt, I know you've covered some of this in the past, but is there anything else you'd like to add to, or at least provide some additional context before we ask for questions?
I think, yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. I think you'll just note, you know, we recommend a seven-member committee, five regular members and two alternates. The approach here is to leave one alternate position open. Again, you know, there's a couple of folks that have expressed interest, but this is a group that I think would cover most of the bases that were intended, at least in the ordinance and give us an opportunity to consider any gaps, you know, should we find them or identify additional needs that we can fill with a new member in the future.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Discussion, questions for Matt prior to voting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead Tiffany.
Just as a moment of levity, I think, Matt, you should pick the fanciest place you can find if the town manager's willing to take you to lunch. So just a moment of levity, this list looks good, thank you.
I appreciate that because I'm thinking, at least Dan has his hand raised, because if not, Matt's going to be, I stay on for eight seconds. So then I go and ask him a really long, complicated question, please.
Okay, I just want to again outline what the charge of this committee is going to be. And are they going to be looking at current properties for potential development? I'm thinking for one of the things like the Rifkin property. You know, what? You want to explain what the scope of this committee is? Because people may literally want to understand what their function is.
Well, it's a good question, however, I think it will be a work in progress. So the town adopted the Housing Choices Plan per state statute, it was about a year and a half ago, maybe two years now. And within it, there are a series of goals and recommendations, goals and objectives, and a series of recommendations in order to get to those goals that the town should consider. So we're going to take a look at those and try to work, I think, you know, substantially. One goal will be to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to make recommendations for amendments to our regulations that would, that would open the opportunity for new housing improvements or new housing projects. I don't think, I don't anticipate, at least not in the near term, this group being a group that will be identifying locations for new projects. But rather looking at, you know, the systems that we have in place, the regulations, the policies we have in place that might be limiting the potential for new housing projects to occur. The other thing that this will do, this project or this group can do is, as I noted, that Housing Advisory Committee, excuse me, Housing Choices Plan is a five-year plan. This group can monitor the progress of the recommendations within that plan and make new recommendations for when that plan needs to be renewed. I think we'll also take the opportunity to provide a report on the progress of of the town's achievement of the goals in the plan. Probably on an annual basis, provide a report to the Board of Selectmen. Think probably share that with other boards and commissions that play a role. You know, I think it's been a personal goal of mine to find a group of, either whether it be a board or commission, or it might just be an undertaking of my own. To try to draw the parallel between the significance or the importance of housing and sustainable economic development environment. So I think, you know, this could be the group that could help paint that picture a little more clearly. Because there's a lot of, you know, not particularly great information, a lot of myths that, you know, warrant busting when it comes to the role that housing has in economic development. So, you know, it's kind of rounded answer, but I don't really see this group as the group, it's not a development corporation, it is not a, you know, it's not a regulatory body the way Planning and Zoning Commission would be. But I think that by sharing information, they can help. They can assist the Planning and Zoning Commission or other groups, maybe even the Economic Development Commission in, you know, looking at their regulations, their policies and advising or making, you know, being proponents for change. I don't know if that's a clear answer, but I think, you know, it's a work in progress, this group will, you know, we'll start with the plan, we'll look at the goals and objectives and the recommendations within it and see where we are and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, other discussion from the board?
The only thing I'd like to add, sorry Keith, I jumped ahead of you, I didn't do my hand.
Oh, go ahead, Claudia, you're good.
I just want to, if I could jump up and clap for the words that Matt just shared with us, I would, but I think I'd look silly. But I sincerely support the vision that you brought forth just now. I think it's critically important, especially in these days of scarcity of affordable housing for folks, whether it's rentals or ownership. Given the opportunity for folks that work very hard. Our first responders, our PCAs, our assistants in the, in, over at Horton Boulevard, those sorts of places. You know, we have to address that, I mean, I've heard many, many stories of families and individuals around town that would love to live here, but they simply can't find a place to live. So I'm very excited about this committee, the the vision that you have in making it come to life. So I'm very excited about this really fine list of people. And looking forward to what you guys come up with in the years to come, so thank you.
Thank you, Claudia, Keith?
Yeah, I know it's probably a couple of years before the next, you know, housing development plan gets issued. But with our, you know, Plan of Conservation Development coming up for publication later this year. I mean, this is a great group of individuals that you've got here, there's a lot of knowledge there, a lot of expertise. You know, even if they could just, you know, run through it real quick and think of some strategic points maybe that would help us get a better grasp on our ten-year planning, you know, Plan of Conservation and Development for the town of Hebron. Any kind of input from people with this level of expertise would be helpful. You know, sometimes those plans, there's not a lot of changes between the previous publication. You know, I personally would love to see some new ideas or some other things in there that strategically Hebron could look forward to in the next five or 10 years as far as housing goes. So I think that would be a great opportunity for them to have some sort of input this year.
Okay, so I'll note that, I appreciate that. I will just make one quick comment if you don't mind. So the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to incorporate some of the, well, really incorporate the entire document, the entire plan by reference. So rather rewriting all the goals and recommendations or goals and objectives and subsequent recommendations. They kind of made a strong, what's the word? Strong connection between the housing goals for the town in the POCD and the Housing Choices Plan that was drafted just a couple of years ago. So by reference, they included those ideas into the POCD.
Okay, thank you, and just in order of when I saw them, Dan, and then we'll go to Tiffany?
Thank you. Talking about the Hebron Plan of development that's being worked on now. I've stated it before and I'll state it again, I think it's critically important that we, as the selectmen, see this plan before it gets voted on and passed. I just want to make sure that all the different boards are on the same page. You know, they've been doing a lot of work and I don't want to negate that. But we really haven't seen any of their direction on any of the topics that they've addressed. And I think it's vitally important that we make sure that we're kind of all rowing in the same direction. And I would almost say it might be a workshop or something before it actually goes to the town meeting. Just my own thought.
Yeah, so if I can respond quickly to that. So four to five sections of the plan, the way it's been designed are all available on the town's website. So, and I've mentioned it a couple of times in the manager's report, that access to that information is available. It is luminous, I will prepare you. That, you know, it's going to take some time to read. There's a lot of material in there, every board and commission in town, all staff departments, the Hebron Board of Education, the Superintendent's Office. Everyone was solicited their feedback. And the majority of them were shared drafts of, you know, the relevant sections for their input. So that's all been considered. The plan will be to hold public hearings in advance of the adoption of the plan. So there will be opportunities and I will share those opportunities with this board so that you can hear a presentation and, and offer feedback. I totally agree that we do need all boards and commissions moving in the same direction. And as I become more familiar with the business of other boards and commissions that I'm not intimately involved in, meaning directly the staff member that assists. I do recognize that there are some some places where a little bit more common, common themes need to be kind of recognized amongst those groups. So I think we do have some work to do on that front. So I hope that ultimately this plan provides that direction. And it will be the burden of myself, the, you know, other town staff and the board here to kind of share that. So in the absence of individual liaison to each, to each commission, you know, sub-board and commission, there's going to be a little bit more of a burden, I guess, on staff and perhaps our digital presence to make sure we're communicating effectively. It's an ongoing challenge, but I think we have the plan in place to provide the direction that's best. And I hope we can, you know, I hope we all can share that vision. So it's a work in progress, but I do think that, you know, you'll find you'll be happy with, you know, the information that's provided. And there will be an opportunity, public hearings, like I said, in advance for your feedback and opportunity to learn a little bit more about what's in there.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Just a moment of pride, if you'll permit me. My mother is Executive Director of Rhode Island Housing. And so this conversation resonates with me because I grew up with someone whose life's mission it is to build affordable housing for the state of Rhode Island. She recently testified in front of the United States Senate on affordable housing, housing choices. The lack of affordable housing and choices in general is a national crisis. It really truly is. It's a topic that I feel very strongly about. And certainly, if we're looking at ways to create a more inclusive community, advisory committees like this are essential to ensure that we can truly become the most inclusive community that we can. So I'm excited to view their progress. I think this is an excellent group of individuals that have been selected. And I just want to reiterate that I'm proud that Hebron is doing its own small part to address something that is a national crisis, thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you for the comments and the good questions and thank you, Matt. I think we're at a point now where the motion's been read, we've had a good discussion and I'd like to move forward with the vote. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note that you wish to abstain, Keith? Mr. Pettit?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes unanimously and thank you again, Matt, and enjoy your lunch with Andy.
Don't settle for apologies.
I will not. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, thankful for your patience. Okay, Mr. Tierney, I think that moves us to A F. Which is the Discussion of the Town Manager's Annual Evaluation. And I will, I thank you, I know we're running a little bit late and I don't intend to rush anything. But where we are with this, just as a summary, is that we have, which is obviously in your packets, two working documents, the 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 new component of this is the the piece that is for the department heads to provide the valuation on. So I thank Donna for providing us with me with some of that material so we could come up with a consolidated, more concise approach. We have an approach outlined that's consistent with what we've done in the past. And along with Tiffany, Tiffany and I will be addressing the staff in a in a future, very, in the very near future staff meeting. So in conjunction with, I mean, and Andy already holds with the town staff, the division heads, department heads, excuse me. And we'll provide, as has been done in the past, the the context for and the importance of of their participation in this process. And so all that documentation is there. I don't intend to go through all all this unless, again, rushing unless we, the board wants to. If there is any tweaks to the documents or anything that you're uncomfortable with, we talked about a a couple of modifications in the past. Please bring those forward, but we are looking to get this process finalized and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, at least from the board's perspective. Trying to get this process completed. The goal, the goal was by the end of February, but we might obviously spill into the beginning of March. But with this, these changes in this process, that'll put us in a good position next year to complete this by the end of January, which I think is our our incremental charge. So thank you for that. Is there anything here that, I know we've discussed the structure before, and we've gone through this, at the last meeting, the new piece with the 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 department heads? Is there any discussion from the board on that for this meeting? Again, there's nothing to vote on. It's just, is there anything that you wish to discuss? Okay, so please take a look, obviously, at the the items, the first section, which is what we have to complete. And I would suggest then that everyone starts working on that. And then as when Tiffany and I meet, meet, excuse me, meet with the department heads, we'll confirm that. And then we'll start collecting those as well, and then we'll update you as as appropriate in the coming, in the coming few weeks. So Andy, is there anything else you wanted to add to this before we move down? Good? Okay. So thank you again for that. So this moves us to eight G. Mr. Tierney?
Moving right along. Eight G is fiscal year 2024, 2025 C I P Budget Review and Approval. The Capital Improvement Plan Policy attached prescribes the Board of Selectmen review the town manager's C I P budget recommendations by February 15th, and finalize the C I P budget and five-year plan by March 1st for inclusion in the upcoming fiscal year budget. Attaches to proposed C I P five-year plan, recommendation for funding sources, and a proposal for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 C I P budget. So I can give you a quick summary, and unless you want to read the motions first.
Oh, yeah, we can read the motion, and then the summary will lead to discussion and questions. So Dan, would you be so kind as to read the motion, please?
Sure. The proposed motion, move that in accordance with the town of Hebron Capital Improvement Plan Policy. The Hebron Board of Selectmen approved a final list of recommended projects for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 C I P budget of $1,375,524 and the five-year plan as presented or amended for inclusion into the town manager's fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget recommendation.
Thank you. Motion's been read. I know Andy mentioned it at the onset, in terms of the challenges here. So obviously, please go ahead and provide any any additional context before we move to any discussions or question.
Yes, I'll be pretty generic just to to view my mindset. Historically, we normally come in around a million-dollar target for C I P. Last year, it came in really, really low, so a lot of projects weren't funded. This year, I'm coming in a little bit higher than, I think it only come in this high once before in my tenure, and that had an offsetting revenue, which was the senior center. I had a grant. Unfortunately, some projects didn't make this list, and I'll get I'll get into that and what I'm proposing. And I met with some of the other entities that think their other their other projects are important. We think they're important too, but we're going to look to do some other funding mechanisms to try to get those complete. But I'm trying to finish the regular budget, which should be done if we approve this tonight unchanged. That'll help a lot of work that does not have to be done tomorrow. We're off Monday. We'll hit the ground on Tuesday. But the items that we are or I'm recommending are listed is road resurfacing and road improvements, $330,558. Replacement of one plow truck for $275,466. Jones Street covert replacement, second final year funding. We only funded a partial, a portion of that last C I P fiscal year, and now we just got that million-dollar grant, so we're going to need to get that done. The kicker here is roofs are important. So the reason I'm coming in over my million-dollar threshold, or what normally is approved at referendum time when the budget goes forward, is we have two roofs for the elementary schools totaling right now $600,000. So that makes up a good portion of that 1.3. What would have been probably a little bit easier on the taxpayers, and we could have done these in separate years, but we got bogged down with COVID and the building committee in the school where one roof was eligible for the timeframe of a 50 cent, 50% reimbursement from the state. But now they're both eligible, so you're looking at them both in the same fiscal year. So that's the, that's the pain that we're feeling, and that's, we think that's important to get the roofs fixed. That's a good portion of this. So that's why those two are in there. The senior center parking lot and drainage repave and expansion, that's been kicked around for a while. That's getting in pretty tough shape. I've reduced the the actual department request, and hopefully Public Works can get it done with less money than originally asked for. And then same thing over in the Horton House. There's so some structural improvements and some building, more than just maintenance, that need to have some improvements done. And he was looking for about $80,000. I cut that back to 50 because some of it is structural. Some of the beams down in the basement needs some some new supports. I know Dan has had done some work down there electrical-wise, so we're trying to, you know, just make, it's more than maintenance, but we need to keep our buildings in good shape and make them safe for the public and the employees that work there. So that came in at 50,000. That's what totals the $1,375,524. I did meet with the superintendent and business manager earlier this week, and they have some other projects that we feel is important. And they feel is important, but they totally understood the rationale of, you know, kind of pumping the brakes at 1.3 or almost 1.4 million in the C I P request going to referendum. There's going to be conversations which have been started already. One, we're going to be looking to try to fund a million-dollar fire truck. They have a P A and a clock system that was in C I P. They're going to try to refine those numbers a little bit. I mean, the quote that they have in there was close to like $300,000. So even I think that might be a little bit exaggerated. So we're going to get the building committee involved with that. And then also a recommendation to try to move that air quality and air conditioning request forward. We're going to look to come up with another means of funding that won't burden the taxpayer so much. We do have 25% in our undesigned fund balance, which was due to collection of, four years now, a collection of back taxes. So we're going to try to lessen that to keep within our policy. Hopefully, we get the grant for the fire truck. We're going to get reimbursement from the state once the roofs are done at 50%. So there will be some revenues coming back in. But the school was very cooperative and totally understood the rationale that we're using and the way the list looks like this. And then we we clearly explained to them that we don't think their, probably the other projects aren't important. But I just think we can only burden the tax payer so much. Just a quick preview, which you guys aren't going to get tonight, but I've got a front page of which is the town's budget where I almost am. I got numbers as latest today, so it's a it's a fluid document. It's it's moving around. But so with the C I P at where it is, and I hope it stays there, I hope you guys approve my recommendation. But right now, we we entertain a 33.19. That's the current mill rate. Where we are with the budget right now would be a 35.15 mill rate, which is 1.96 of an increase. I mean, for where we are in the budget process right now, that's a lot better than where I was last year. But there's still some more work to do to get that palatable, to get that approved, hopefully on the first round when it goes to referendum. So all these things add up to that number in the mill rate. So hopefully, we can have a good budget season, but tonight is a night to approve the C I P, and that's my rationale of what I'm suggesting. I think the things on it are important. And it doesn't mean the other ones aren't important, but there will be communications with the Boards of Selectmen, Boards of Finance, on how we can move forward with funding mechanisms to get some of those other projects done.
Okay, thank you for that detail. Questions for Andy or discussion? Keith, anything you wish to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I understand what Andy is saying about, you know, revenue streams associated with some of these things. We have some excellent grant writers and stuff in town, and we go out and we apply for state dollars and state reimbursements on all sorts of things, purchases as well as construction. You know, I just think that that we need to make sure that we're proactive on the optics of this and that we're making sure that, you know, the average voter understands that even though the C I P total is 1.3, we're looking to get back, you know, 300,000 of this from the state as a 50, as the 50% contribution towards those roofs. You know, in addition to that, I know the state has just issued another round of HVAC grants, which should help us with that 1.6 price tag in the the next year. So, you know, these are all things that, yes, there is a little bit of sticker shock when when we, as the Board of Selectmen, are approving an expenditure budget. But we need to be tying that back to the revenue side of things so that people understand that even though there's this dollar amount on the expenditure side that they're approving, we have X amount of dollars coming back. So their mill rate is not going to see the full impact of those expenses because we're recouping some of that money. So I just wanted to throw out there to make sure that we get those, get that information out to voters and make sure that we're ahead of the optics on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the road resurfacing and road improvements, things like that have always been in the C I P. So this is the best place, and Andy could get into why, and this has been historically where this stuff would be put. I want to talk about the truck, and I think it's important. What I wanted to say is I happen to swing down to the the town yard because I'm supposed to be doing a project down there as soon as a company puts in a immersion heater in in one of the oil tanks. The the breakdowns that our town had are basically because, and even though they wash and clean and and do all of the things to try to keep our our equipment on the road, things that are disintegrating are like radiators and stuff like that. And a lot of it's the the materials in the vehicles nowadays. You know, a 2005 truck or 2024. Our our crew does an incredible job nursing these things along. But we, that I've stated it before, we're going to have to come up with some sort of, us in the Board of Finance, long-term plan on this rolling stock because it is expensive. You know, the fire truck, a perfect example, and you can't have this stuff down. You know, and I don't know if Andy wants to elaborate some of what happened. But we have incredible people working with equipment that is starting to really show its age, and you can only put so much glue on it. So I support this whole thing.
I think you're right, and I think ultimately, the challenge for the town and for the board going forward in years to come is that the infrastructure needs to be addressed, and with that, there's a price tag associated with it. So we have to continue to balance that need with the taxpayers. And as Keith said, how do we make sure, from a communication perspective, that this information, in general, I mean, we talked about sort of communication on the revenue side, but also communicating in general to the public what's ahead of us. So it doesn't come as a surprise when we have to make some difficult decisions going forward. So I appreciate all the the work of this. Claudia, did you want to add anything or ask anything?
Yeah, I just want, much like my colleagues here, the investment in in capital projects is critical, right, to keep our town running. And the the thing that I wanted to to point out, also to Keith's point about the PR behind this, the message that we're trying to get to the public is, you know, obviously, once this all gets out and it goes into the River East, you know, what what can we do, be proactive about, I don't want to say control the message, but make sure there are points as to why, what's behind the why, gets out to the public so that it's being digested by people so that they understand, as opposed to, you know, people just making stuff up, that we have to make sure that we're proactive with the facts. So make sure we're in communication with with the press for sure.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany, anything you wish to add before we go to a vote?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to lie. I think it's a it's a big number. And I think that oftentimes what we've seen tracking in terms of referendum results, big numbers are tough to pass. I am confident, however, that given the issues with the C I P last year were really related to one one ticket item, and once that came out, it went through. I think, as others have said, as long as we can be quite clear on revenue streams and getting that message across, you know, I'm comfortable moving it forward. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I think it's a high number, and I think that we need to, as a board collectively, do our part to ensure that the public's educated as to why we're sending it forward. Thank you.
Great, great points. All right, thank you so much. So based on that commentary, and thank you, Andy, for all the context, and obviously the hard work that's going into making what is always a difficult final listing for us to review and approve. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, signify please by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you. Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. The proposed motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Andy, for all the detail that you provided to facilitate the discussion and ultimately the vote. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, eight H is any other old business. Andy, anything from you?
Nope.
Okay. Anything from the board? Okay. That moves us to then nine nine D, nine D. Okay. So that is the approved A H M Youth and Family Services fiscal year 24 to 25 budget. Andy, anything on this before? I mean, I have, I've seen something on this, but maybe in terms of why this is here? Or what the backup is?
Yeah, it's a proposed motion, and they list their budget. They do a great amount of work for our community. If we had to go out and employ our own social workers, I think it would be double the cost to the town. Since COVID, they've been very busy. They're not just dealing with youth, they're dealing with families and elderly. And they're busy. So I think they're doing their best to raise, as they always have, raise as much money as they can with fundraisers and and grants and such. And on the second page, you'll see the list of the budget from the proposed 24, 25. They got an income compared to the 23, 24 income. And then on the other count, they have the 24, 25 expenses, and then the 23, 24 expenses. And then they have listed at the bottom, total expenses and the difference. So the budget's up. Operating costs are up about 10%. They've they've been busier than with what's going on in the world today. You know, I think everybody can contest to what COVID did. There's a lot of work to be done. So unless there's questions, no, sir, you can you can jump in. You attended the meeting. So unless there's questions, no sir, you can, you can jump in, you attended the meeting and...
Yes. You're right, spot on, Andy, and I'll, you know, I'm going to, I'll read the motion and then I'll provide a little additional context and then open it up for discussion. So it moves that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve Hebron's share of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-four to twenty-five, Andover, Hebron and Marlboro Youth and Family Services budget in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and include this amount in the town of Hebron's fiscal year twenty-two-four to twenty-two-five budget. So just some additional context after that, reading in a motion and I'll open it up for discussion is, my, in this, you know, my liaison report, both millions, this meeting that we just had when the budget was viewed as intended to be, it, it, the intent is that the budget gets voted on by, and passes five of six votes for this specific item in their budget, which is represented from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for each of the three towns. The Board of, Selectmen and the Board of Finance were represented by the town of Hebron only. And so thank you, Mal, for attending, that is represented for the Board of Finance. So the vote actually could not happen and, but we got an, an opportunity here to bring this forward with some additional detail. Yeah, I, what AHM does is phenomenal and the charge ahead, and there are fifty children, as an example, on the waiting list for services, fifty children. It's, it's upsetting to even think of. And the work that they're doing is phenomenal. And if you look at the Hebron share, which is based on, we're forty-nine point eight three percent of the budget and it's just, it's just based on, on numbers of, of size of the towns and it's, it's a math exercise. If you look at the town of Hebron, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars was our twenty-three to twenty-four period, three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-six, or effectively fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars is the increase year over year. If you look at the historic pattern from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, it is, it is beyond value that we're getting for our community. These services need to be provided to our families and our children and the work that they do on our behalf in effect is, is a fraction of what it would cost for us to support those same, and using my children example, those same children if we were to have to support them with the full services at a full cost. So it's a tremendous value and they really do wonderful work there and I think we've seen it over a long period of time, but my perspective, having gone to the meeting and understanding AHM as much as any citizen might be able to understand AHM, I strongly recommend that, that we, that I strongly support this. But again, I'm open to, let's have some discussion, additional questions that might come up, but anything from the board on this item? Or give everyone a chance to weigh in. Keith, anything you wish to add?
No, I, I completely agree with you. I mean, I, I'm not obviously as involved as you are in the intricacies of the different budget line items, but I can say from past experience, especially having been on the Board of Ed previously, that the amount of services that AHM provides, especially for, for young people in our town is fantastic and, you know, we definitely benefit from all of the services that they provide. We would not be able to do the same amount of work, funding it ourselves that they help provide to us. So, you know, I, I support them with the budget that they put forward and I hope that they continue doing the, the good work that they do for our town and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, I know you've been an integral part of this, have been for many, many years. So anything you wish to add or discuss?
No, but, you know, being the liaison in past years, seeing exactly the types of things they do, I think it would be foolhardy for us to not support this. You're not going to get the types and quality of service for that kind of money from any other organization. It's not going to happen. It is the best bang for the dollar and their work has been exemplar, exemplary and, you know, we, we need to support them.
Thank you. Tiffany, anything you wish to add or questions or discussion?
Just very, very quickly, I, I think, I think even before COVID, right, I think there's an urgent need for these types of services. I think children today are dealing with complex issues that perhaps others have not dealt with in previous generations. And I think anything that we can do to support children in our town, you know, in terms of mental health and, and those types of things, I think we absolutely have to support. So I have no questions and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia?
Sure, I just want, I just would want to contribute just more on a personal level, just as, as a parent, my kids have used the services of AHM over the years through, you know, compassionate care and, and listening ear and support. So heck yeah, I'm definitely a big supporter of AHM from personal experience.
Thank you so much. And, and Mal, I know you, you've joined and, and I don't know if I gave it, any justice or additional context, but since you're a part of it and obviously you met with the Board of Finance, but also join me on that and we're at that meeting. So thank you for being the only Board of Finance member of the three towns to attend. But is there anything that you wish to add just to provide some final context on this before we move to a vote? No? Okay, thank you. So with that, and thank you for the, the commentary and, and just as a, as a final thought on this, and Tiffany, you hit the nail on the head because it, it was surprising at one of the other towns at how many questions they had and really a fundamental, probably lack of understanding about the care that's needed and in general, the idea that it's a cost going to go down and the cost is going to go up year over year because of the need. We have fifty children on the waiting list, there is a societal need and the idea that the costs are going down, could go down, is not something that we should ever anticipate. The fact that it actually is within this amount, to me, continues to be a benefit for our town for the reasons discussed. So I thank the, the folks at AHM for all the hard work they do, the significant fundraising and all that they do to keep this as affordable as it is. And again, for the, the value associated with the community benefit is clear. So I apologize for that additional ramble, but it's, it's something that feels strong about and let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Mr. Pettit?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper votes aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Nine E, draft agenda for March seventh. So as, as you know, there's the agenda, musicians, please reach out to the town, so that's in your packet. Nine F, any other new business? Mr. Tierney, anything from you that we failed to cover in this lengthy meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, anything from the board, anything we didn't cover that you had expected us to cover, new business? No? Okay. So much. That moves us to ten, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section, they request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. I wanted to take out February, the February first regular meeting minutes because I have a potential change in such, or a question associated with that. So other than the February first regular meetings, is there anybody that wishes to discuss the, the meeting minutes of the twenty-ninth, the first public hearing or the tax refunds? Because we, we can group those together, but I do wish to take out the regular meeting minutes for a separate discussion. Okay. So Andy, am I, am I good with calling for a vote on those, the tax refunds and, and the ARPA workshop and public hearing? And then is that, I do that first? Okay. So with the removal of the regular minutes for just a separate discussion, which will be brief, all those in, in favor of approving the minutes noted and the tax refunds, you signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you. Peter Casper, aye. That motion passes unanimously and we'll then move to the February first regular minutes. I, I apologize, I'm looking for some help here. I have a, a note based on the minute state, there's a reference to me approving, proposing the motion for the midnight aging and with, for both Rebecca Tamsin and Margaret Gibbs, I did not propose those motions. I recall, unfortunately, I didn't note the second one, I recall that Dan would propose the first, made the first motion and I'm thinking Keith, the second, I don't know if anyone recalls, but I, I did not make those motions, from my recollection. And if, you know, I'm happy to take ownership of those motions, but I didn't know if anyone noted that and wished to make a correction. Again, I unfortunately did not make a, a note as to who made the, the motion for Margaret Gibbs. I had made a note that Dan, and I don't know if Dan, you remember, if you don't remember, that's fine. I mean, I, I'm not looking to make this a lengthy discussion, I just, I don't recall making those motions and if no one else recalls, again, I'm happy to take ownership of those motions for the record.
Peter?
Yeah.
I would have them in my notes from the, on the agenda from the last meeting, but I don't have that agenda with me. So I could check, we could table these minutes and get that accurate information if you'd like.
Yeah, let's just do that and it's, and again, if I made a mistake of not recalling it correctly, but that jumped out at me, so thank you. So let's table the motion of February first and we'll just pick that up at the next, at the next meeting. Thank you, Donna, for clarifying that for me.
Okay.
So thank you for doing that. So with that, it would move us to liaison report, I've discussed mine in terms of AHM Youth Services, that was my update. Tiffany, an update from the Board of Ed?
Very quickly, because I know it's late, the Hebron Board of Education held their budget forum on February seventh, about twenty to twenty-five people attended. It was a good group, it was an engaged conversation and I think a good start to the budget year. The Hebron Board of Ed will be presenting on their preliminary budget, I think it's important to note again, it's preliminary. There's only funding for maintaining current programming, there's no new programming or any major staffing changes proposed and I know we'll hear more about that as we get into the budget workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Dan, Board of, any Board of Finance update?
Nope, that'll be next week, so.
Thank you. Keith, land acquisition?
So land acquisition met on February seventh as well and normally we have a robust turnout from the public, but I think they were all at the Board of Ed pizza extravaganza. So we had a little bit less than our normal turnout, but all of the voting members were there and we discussed the, the PowerPoint presentation for the upcoming budget presentation for Open Space. We also talked about a little bit the plan of conservation and development for the town, discussed a couple of other small items, but the, the majority, the bulk of the meeting was in preparation of the budget presentations that are going to be occurring in, in March. So that was pretty much a wrap on that.
Thank you, Keith. Claudia, the Ram Board of Ed?
Yeah, sure. So along the same lines, I guess, to quote Taylor Swift, we are all in our budget era right now. So as far as Ram BOE goes, they have also started to go to the different towns to do their budget workshops. Marlboro is next week, Hebron and Andover the week after next week. And they feel very confident that the budget that they are proposing is a sound one. Secondly, there is a surplus of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, or a hundred and twenty thousand that of course, as you all know, is divided between the three towns. They have reported that they're going to keep two percent of that for capital non-recurring expenses, which is the amount that is allowed. And then of course, as you all know, that distribution of the surplus is based on student population. And that's all from Ram BOE.
Thank you. Andy, anything from you? I know we went off your list, but you provided updates in person. Okay, thank you. That moves us to section twelve, which is public comment. Donna, one on for public comment?
I do not see anything here tonight, no public comment.
Okay, that moves us to item thirteen. Before we get to that, I just wanted to thank everybody for your patience, I know we went over, but it was a substantive agenda and a lot of discussion in progress, so thank you for that. So thirteen, I would look for a, a motion and a second.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, nine twenty-six, a second for the record.
Sure.
Or Dan, Tiffany?
Yeah, Dan's on it.
All right, whatever. Let the record decide. So with that, I, I wish you a good evening. Thank you so much for your time and participation.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Good night, thanks everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.